Today is Tuesday, September 15, 2015.
In for him on this. And I see number three as elimination of out-of-school suspension. I told Zo she probably should have looked at the time that I sent her that email. But I had been reading articles about how some schools were trying to eliminate out-of-school suspension. And I think there are several school districts in the state that were looking at doing that. And I know that there are issues that call for it. But before we could even discuss it, I wanted to know what our numbers were. Because I know that out-of-school suspensions cause hardships for the parents who are working. It keeps the child from getting their work done. And another thing, if the child is suspended for acting up in school because of what might have gone on the night before at home, sending them back home into that environment doesn't help the problem. So I wanted to know what our numbers were and what kinds of programs we have in the schools to take care of this. And I remember Caroline, you brought this up too. It's something that we've been talking about on and off for a couple of years. And I wanted the superintendent to, A, give us what the status is and what kinds of programs we're working on and if there's something we can be looking at more.
So what I have distributed is basically last year's data for the full year. It's broken down into elementary, middle, and high. So those schools that have combination grades, we've separated those because you almost have to look at the statistics separately. You have the total enrollment for those schools or for the part at that level. The number of students who were suspended. The percent that represents of the total population. And then the total number of days suspended. And remember, some students, it could have been multiple times if it's a student with significant issues. So that's kind of a layout of the data. This is something we've been reviewing and doing a number of things. When you look at how do we address misbehavior? Certainly, we want our schools to look at options, particularly for those incidents that are not as significant. I mean, there's a variation in terms. Sometimes a student might have been suspended for disruptive behavior over a long period of time. So it's not the first time, but it's an outcome of several times. So we want to look through our care teams and for our teams that look at students that are struggling either academically or behaviorally, of what are the interventions that might be appropriate to address those issues. Sometimes it's as simple as looking at a mentor or a student, that they don't have a significant person in their life to kind of coach them and give them the incentives and the desire. Sometimes it can be handled within the classroom, just looking at a different incentive program, so behavior management system that seems to curb some of those misbehaviors. There are times though where it's significant enough that there must be further interventions at a higher level. We contract with board-certified behavior analysts, and we are actually getting some of our staff trained in that, which really these individuals go into the classroom and observe what is happening. What triggers the misbehavior and the conflict? And what are some strategies that for this specific student might be effective? And so they actually craft a behavior management plan just for that student. And then we-
Do we have doing that?
They're called board-certified behavior specialists. So we either contract because that's a very difficult credential. It takes significant college-level courses to achieve that. There's a test as well to achieve that credential. But we just had another one of our employees that we paid for the college courses, if they would dedicate themselves to taking them so that they could become board-certified and be able to provide that service. So we're looking at enhancing our capacity to provide that level of service for those students where what has typically been handled by the care team or the team of experts looking at that are not being successful. So we look deeper at what are the significant strategies that might make a difference. And we've seen positive results. But again, that's for the extreme cases where we're not seeing any success in managing behavior. It could, many times it is a student is identified has a disability that's creating some of these issues. We're also looking at preventive mechanisms. I'm a big believer that for many of our students, it is teaching appropriate behavior and expectations over time. And we've found our positive behavior support, which we spend a lot of time with, manages the behavior of most students in a way that does not require, even with these percentages, you see, they're fairly low in terms of the overall student enrollment that they have to experience a suspension. But we've looked at, through an initiative that's really come from the community, for us to examine something that's called restorative practices. It was a movement that came up through the DJJ system, but they were having some success. And we've had now ways that you modify that and really implement in a school environment. We will have all of our elementary schools have some staff trained in that, and we'll be able to implement that. It is strategies that really start to teach empathy. How your actions impact another person. So that there's a feeling that it's not just about me. My behavior impacts someone else, and I have to restore that in some way. So that's a tier-one intervention, that they actually have classroom circles, that students have an opportunity to talk and to say where they're feeling uncomfortable with another student's behavior. It's really opened up some of those rich discussions that are important in a classroom culture to kind of define, we're a community here in this classroom. We rely on each other. And when one of us has a behavior issue, it impacts the whole class, and we want to voice how that feels.
Is that, I think we might have seen this in maybe FSBA, where the teacher, instead of sitting down with the kid after, "Why did you hit or why did you do this?", and demanding an answer. And they said the student then gets defensive, and then instead of saying, "Can you tell me what happened?". Is that what we're talking about, the restorative?
It's similar. The tier-two strategies that are part of restorative practices, it really is having someone trained, this is all with training, so it's not done just on a whim. A trained individual sits with two students that just have had a negative interaction and pursues a conversation that talks about how that made the person that was the victim, how that made them feel, what caused that, and really has a conversation. And what am I going to do to basically restore that relationship and that individual for what you've taken away by your action? But it starts with that universal tier where the classroom has an opportunity to discuss things. And it's a very, we train our teachers to facilitate it. So it's not just, oh, let's have a class discussion. It's done in a very targeted way that helps students be able to really talk about what's bothering them. So that, for example, we've had instances with our, because we've been doing this several years, where the student that was having an issue in the classroom, not responding to directions, causing disruption, confessed about things that were happening in the home that was really disturbing them. The whole class then rallied around that student to say, "Now we understand, we want to help." So it's about-
And I have the social black belt is another program that sometimes helps do that very thing.
There's other strategies that kind of build those conversations. So we're looking at providing training and support. In fact, we have a Vista grant, which will allow us to hire up to five individuals that will then actually go into the schools. They will be trained, they will go into the schools, and support teachers that are trying to do this, to whether it's at that tier-one or tier-two intervention level. So that's one area.
When will that be?
There, we've got three that are ready to go, Vista volunteers, and we're just starting. In fact, they'll start next week. So we're good to go there. We've also, going back to our board-certified behavior analysts, we also have a new program that was part of this year's budget where there's follow-up. Once we have a plan for a student, again, the student that has significant issues, that really requires that levels of support, then we have another level of an individual who has an understanding to help monitor. So we go back and support the teacher, "How's it going?". So the most expensive staff is that board-certified analyst that is there to develop the plan. Then we have support for the teacher in monitoring and seeing if there needs to be adjustments in the plan. So that's, we're believing that that will give us more success. So I think there isn't a cookie-cutter answer to lowering our suspension. You have to do preventive. You have to have intervention options for students. We also need to use the resources that we have now to dive deeper where we're having significant problems. We had a student last week at an elementary school, still a teacher's iPod or still something very expensive. It resulted in a suspension. Now, I know from this family that there are a lot of issues. So how can we, having an out-of-school suspension, although it may be appropriate for the level of that offense, and can, if that elementary student doesn't learn some lessons now that have been created, almost not just the family but the neighborhood that he lives in, then that's a student that's not headed for a bright future. So it's not just about the suspension, it's what, how can we access the support mechanisms that are in the community to help a student that's at risk and needs more support than perhaps our resources? And how can we work with our social workers to see what's available for this family? And how can we work with law enforcement and DJJ to try to say, "What are the opportunities to help a student before he becomes part of the DJJ?". So you've got this range of issues and range of appropriate strategies that we must provide because all levels of students are there. Now, some of these districts that have eliminated out-of-school suspension, you need to know what the reality means with that. It does not mean that they're allowing students to have infractions and basically degrade the learning environment by staying at a school and that they're ignoring that. That's not what they're doing. However, in many of these districts, and I believe it's all of them, they basically reassign the student for a short period of time to another facility. In some cases, there's no bus transportation. It's where a teacher is there. Basically, they've been assigned for five days to go to this area at a park facility, and they will be supervised by a teacher to do some work outside of the, some like homework assistance kind of thing. I'm not sure that is a good plan either. It's more expensive, and basically, many of these students don't show up. The quality of the instruction is limited because you have different grade levels and basically you're there just supervising what work they might have taken if they show up.
Well, Triad, that's some-
That's for expulsion.
Triad is in lieu of expulsion. And remember, suspensions tend to be anywhere from one day to 10 days typically. I mean, very, very few, a maximum of 10 days for any, at any point for a student with disability. So, you know, the bulk of them are three to five days. In some cases, it's simply a one day. So you don't have extended, an out-of-school suspension is not for an extended period of time. So they may have eliminated it, but in reality, they're being removed from the school environment. They're being put in another environment if they show up during that short period of time.
What, excuse me, Laura, what is Dr. Shelly doing?
You'll see that they're out of Vista-
I'm sorry. Dr. Booker. Yes, Dr. Shelley.
Dr. Shelley?
Yeah. That's, okay.
Well, they, all of our schools are beginning to analyze this data and look for different options. In some cases, at Emma E. Booker, at Booker Middle, Mathentos, Herring Creek, we have programs supported with Jewish family to provide some interventions that can pull them out of regular classrooms, but they're still on the school campus, different from an out-of-school suspension because they're actually getting some support to trying to redirect those behaviors.
They're getting individual and group therapy.
Yes. With a mental health therapy.
To your point, I think to your point, is that there are alternatives, whether we make it a policy that we're eliminated as a whole, which it could be a slippery slope and also, you know, I'd be interested to see the data on the, you know, because I think it is sometimes so silly to think about, you know, there are certain households where suspension holds that bearing and it's a big deal, and that's not, and that is more scary than anything else, that it would be, it's damage on your record, it's damaging, your family's going to be frustrated that you're, you know, and that's unacceptable. But then there is the alternative that, sadly, that you do that, but the impact on the alternative from the home side or from the future side just isn't as, doesn't look, you know, where it had that much bearing anymore. Or, I mean, from a generality, and so when we're doing alternatives, which I think was very time that Dr. Shelley at Booker, which was, you know, the sailing club, and I mean, I don't know the name of it exactly, but even like, you know, Rachel's challenge and different ways to bring them in, and that's what you're going through is different programs we've had.
And different ways that students begin to monitor and change their own behavior because of relationships with other students and adults that cause them to make that change. That's when, that's the most successful option. On the other hand, if you don't have students making those choices where even those options are available, sometimes it's trying to balance, how do we at least give the message that this behavior is unacceptable? And if you don't change, then there's going to be consequences. So I think finding that right balance, and I'm not sure, I mean, that's a student-by-student conversation and thoughtful process. So I don't think there's a rubber stamp. But it is something we're all more mindful of because, number one, you take kids out of school, typically that's a negative thing. And for most schools, there are exceptions where, you know, that student was suspended one time in their whole career, and it never happened again because that lesson was learned. There are those situations that very successful adults like to look back at their school career and look at that kind of a consequence that made a significant impression. But multiple out-of-school suspensions, we have to weigh, we understand this is helping the learning environment, but is it really addressing the issue of the student? And what can we do differently? And do we, is there a better option, even for those more minor offenses, that will allow that student to change their behavior without pulling them out of school? So I think it's being more thoughtful, but also giving us more tools and options that will help support our families, such as restorative practices, such as some of those specific programs that I think can eventually change this data.
Well, I guess going back, do we have, either these programs or initiatives are going forward, and I know more specifically about Booker High School and the outcomes, and have met those students, and I think some of us also here have as well, but where we can track or, not, that's not a very word, but we're really seeing the high benefit of it. So it's something, as a board, we're going to say, "We're fully supportive of this because that changed the trajectory for that child's life, and that's obviously huge for us." So do we have that kind of information that will show that this is really something we need to help invest in?
I think, Les, with most initiatives, you're doing multiple things at the same time. And even right now, Booker High's date isn't where Dr. Shelley wants it to be. It's not as low as some of the other high schools. But I think we, what we're doing now is monitoring the data. And we're having an easier way of drawing it. Frankly, before, we made some modifications, it was difficult to get, for principals to kind of see, "Where are we?". And at a high school, the principal isn't the only one making that decision, although it ultimately is responsible, because you have assistant principals that are also involved with discipline. So I think it's really monitoring it at the district level so that we can see what schools need support and what can we do to help with that. I think it's, that will help. Whether or not we can point to, "Oh, this is making the difference", I think many times it's a combination. But sharing, we're also dedicating part of that professional development, a principal meeting time, to sharing what seems to be working so that we can kind of spread the wealth. And seek, and looking at ways to connect the community support systems. Because I will tell you, with some family situations, it's going to be beyond what we can do alone to really change the interaction that's occurring in the family and the neighborhood. And we've got some new federal grant that I think might be able to help us in addressing some of the issues that are in part of our community that might help with this. I mean, that individual elementary student stole that iPod to sell to an older teen in the neighborhood who was saying, "I'll get, for everyone you steal, I'll give you this amount of money". And so, I mean, that's, so connecting with law enforcement so that we can begin to have interventions that move beyond the classroom, because it comes into the school at some point when we have those kinds of issues in the neighborhood and in the community. So I think for, in some, at some levels, it is us working together with one focus on how can we have more successful students that will remain in school receiving appropriate instruction.
Do we have a behavior specialist in all of our elementary schools or social worker?
We have social workers assigned, although they may have four schools. But we have behavior specialists in any, in any school that has a number of students with disabilities. So where you have higher, where you have clusters that have, you have a behavior specialist. So for a number of our schools. But we also have these roving board-certified analysts that can go into any school where there is a significant issue that requires additional behavioral support.
And we don't employ these people, they're consultants, do we, correct?
No. Some of them are contracted, some we employ. And we're becoming more of having them, our district-wide behavior specialists with that board-certified credential that allows them to do this, so we don't have to rely just on contracting with individuals. Right now, it's a combination of both, but we're looking at enhancing that by paying for their college training. But it's a, it's a two-year program. I mean, it's a significant investment of time and energies to be able to meet all the requirements.
You know, and like, you know, Bridgette said, a lot of it depends upon how the parents react to what it is we do. I, you know, my daughter had a kid in her class, if it was an older kid, would be expelled, but called in the parent and said, you know, there's, and she right away went to a pediatrician and a counselor, and then, you know, came back and, "We need to do this, this, and this". So you've got a parent that's, I guess it's a grandparent, that's willing to help, that wants to correct the problem versus those that, you know, are just checked out or maybe not be there or whatever. So I just wanted to make sure that we all knew some of the things we're doing and, you know, if we all feel this is enough or we need more. But I definitely like to hear what we're doing and know that we're continuing to work in that area. See, just my letter saying, "I want to put this on".
But I agree, and I can think from a, even if it's a staff update workshop or something, because I think it's definitely a hot topic around, and it is, people are realizing that old solutions aren't really the impact that it once was or wasn't even worth it. And so we are doing a lot of stuff, and we are being innovative. But also, and I'm glad to hear that we're, you know, that staff is talking to and sharing best practices, because in my opinion, that, those are the kind of things that go a long way. And even seeing some of the success stories firsthand that I, you know, that some of us have been able to see from students, and I think those are game changers really, so, you know.
Do you think it would be helpful to maybe have a presentation at one of our board meetings so that the public could hear about it? Or do we need it? I don't know. We're in the workshop.
We're doing so many things, but I think it would be nice if we could be updated on this as we go through this year.
Sure. At a workshop or a meeting?
Well, even informally, I don't know. But right now, I'm happy to know that this is going on because I didn't know, and I knew that they were doing something in Booker High, but not specifically what. But I think these kinds of interventions, these kinds of solutions are really important in keeping kids engaged and keeping them in school. And so many kids today really don't have that boundary that, of a schedule or of other things, and they come to school and they're-
They live in a different world.
We do.
When we instituted zero tolerance years ago.
Exactly.
I knew then it was a problem, but we modified it to a gray area because if it was black or white, you could do something, you were out.
But I will tell you, our district never implemented zero tolerance in the way some could interpret the law. There was always a sense of reasonableness. But I think it's still an area that we can improve upon, don't get me wrong. I think we need to look at this data, we need to monitor it, and we need to ask ourselves, are we doing what's in the best interest of the student to change that behavior? And the trend line that we see, because ultimately, that will have the greatest impact. If we can change that trajectory where we see students, if they don't change, there're going to be significant issues, and they will not be one of our graduates. We need to intervene early, preventive, and if we're, if the student gets older and they're still exhibiting that, then we need to ask our community partners to help, find the best strategies.
And for that reason, because I think the community will play such a critical role, and I think presentation standpoint may be of benefit in whatever we're talking from timeframe, because I think-
I'd be happy to do that. I'll schedule a workshop. I find that to be the environment that really, we can kind of present different options and have it visible for the community as well. So we'll schedule that at one of your monthly workshops this coming year.
Yeah, but I think that the professional development-
One of the things that we need to do is to make sure that our community partners are aware that we're presenting this workshop.
Absolutely.
Because I know that, you know, like Children's First, JSCS, I mean, there's a lot of our community partners that would be interested in helping us and have programs to help us.
Right. I agree. And I think that being aware, and also, hopefully, whatever, what challenges the district's experiencing because of whether, if we have a gap in resources, that's what we'll be able to uncover and someone can say, because that so often happens, or someone can fill that space here. And then that makes a lot of difference in the world, so.
Or maybe even some of, you know, community, like the Girls Incorporated, Boys and Girls Club, if they, I know they've talked to me about how it's difficult sometimes to get the kids from the school to the provider. So maybe there's ways we can look into that too.
It's difficult to get people into our schools sometimes to work. It is. That's a fight that I've had the last two years.
Well, we'll talk about all of those things, but that's what it is. But what I think, the first thing is that, you know, we as a school district, our first option isn't put the kid out. What we want to do is solve the problem and-
I've been asking, Lori will tell you, how many years I've been asking for social workers.
Yep. Well, it's a budget item, so we'll work on it.
Right. She said, what, well, her comment to me was, "Well, what would you like to cut?". I'm placing that.
So I think you've got the word that that's an important issue for us, and we want to continue on those programs you've got.
Put it on a future workshop.
Okay. Holiday cards for wounded veterans.
This is a lot, much, a lot lighter topic, but I know, last Veterans Day, I remember, I know a couple of us were at the ceremony, and I think even we had during public comments, someone mentioning us having, you know, closing school for it. And I think the goal is having proper recognition of our veterans. And Tampa, actually, and there, from a VA standpoint, there are multiple outlets that we could do this from, so this is very high level, and how we would implement it would be, we're coming. But I wanted to kind of get your guys' feedback, is November 11th is Veterans Day, right around the corner is the holidays, we could do it a couple of different ways. But my thought was, and I will donate out of my, I will deliver them if need be from a cost standpoint, so we don't have to worry about mailing them. But it was have an initiative from district-wide to provide, whether they're handmade, I already contacted Hallmark to see if they donate actual cards, so from the older, from a time standpoint or whatever, we can get those donated. So we're not talking about costs, it's merely just a thought process, you know, and the impact to raise awareness about, you know, the sacrifice that our veterans do and kind of try and tailor around whether we do Veterans Day or holiday or something like that. That's really, I don't know.
I've been at Venice Elementary School.
Do something specific. So I know we have different ceremonies. This was something, and I've done this myself personally with that, I think it's James H. Haley, which is the trauma center. And they have, you know, set rules or what, but like I said, there's a enormous amount of different locations we could, so I don't know if it would be, and I think we have different, I know some of our schools do different things, but I just, I think from an awareness standpoint, putting on every student's radar from kindergarten to 12th grade, to have to be really aware of the massive sacrifice and try to correlate it to that.
I know that I get- I know that I get gift cards, not gift cards, I get cards, well, F. Gifts, from the Audubon Society, the World Wildlife Fund, and all these others. And I've got a lot, a lot of cards.
You mean like blank cards, is that what you're saying?
No, they say, thinking of you, I get a lot of them for, for the holidays, you know?
I get those, too.
And I, I, I cannot bring myself to throw them away. I've got a box of them, though.
Oh, there you go, right there.
Yeah, from a logistics standpoint, I would want to know what your thought was, and how we would, if it's something you guys think, from an initiative, a very positive, simple aspect, you know?
Well, we do have an expectation that every school have a plan to address Veterans Day. So there, it is something, and we, we have schools planning now.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's such a huge event at their school. I know Venice Middle is off the chart in terms of what they're going to be doing this year.
And Venice Elementary's, there's some really great things here.
Always, oh, yeah. And Mathentas, so there's a number that have put a lot of importance to this. But what we do at the district level is, through our curriculum department, you know, send ideas of what they might do that we know are available, and so that they can send that out to individual teachers, or they can make it a school-wide initiative. So if there is a specific project that the board would like us to include, to say, if you would like to be involved in this, this is what you do, and kind of give us the guidelines of, of what it entails, then we'll send that out with this list of different ideas, and any school that wants to, or classroom that would like to participate. So if you could just have kind of a write-up, this is the idea, that you would do this, and you deliver, you know, just give us the specifics.
And I had mine more towards holiday time.
Well, I think they could even be at any time, but...
Exactly.
But you know what, it would be a, a good lesson for, is the kids to be able to write, whether they be blank cards or not.
Or...
But I would think while they, while we're asking for the schools, the schools could then put out to, I'm sure there's other people like me that get these boxes of cards, and that at some point clean out their cupboards, and I, I just can't throw them away. I will give them anywhere, but I won't throw them away. So I'll be happy to take mine and give them to a school, and that might be something we might ask the schools, so, because I'm sure that it's not a cost, there's a lot of people that are...
Well, that's why I didn't want, from, from, before presenting this, I've already thought of it, so it would have, outside of the time that the students would do, would not cost, we'll find a way for it to be very minimal, or not cost at all.
Sure.
I think that, but to have it go directly to, the impact that I've had or seen when these patients unfortunately get that, is pretty profound, so I just think it's a...
Yeah, there's, there's different veterans groups that would be happy to deliver them. I know there's Veterans for Peace that will, there's several veterans groups, and all we have to do, and I think if the schools are doing something, they can connect with those groups and send the cards.
So if you have some idea of...
I have guidelines, et cetera, that are required for those.
Yes, if you could send that to me, then I'll make sure we distribute that. And, and sometimes they'll start something in preparation for Veterans Day, but it's something that's completed later on.
Exactly.
So there are schools that, I mean, I'm amazed at the projects that our schools do in a variety of areas. To reach out in the holiday season, they do a lot of that as well. So I'll be happy to share those ideas with our schools, so, to see if there's interest, and I'm sure that some schools will pick up on it, because they're all doing a lot of different things in that arena.
Very.
Summer Learning Academy.
And I'm actually gonna, I put this on there, but I, and I talked to Lori yesterday about it, but I wanted to, essentially tee it over to her, because I know I had been talking to some members in the legislature, and I know, understand that Jane as well had, and I think it's something we're all passionate about, so, but I'll tee it over to you for follow-up.
So, for the first time this year for our legislative delegation, they have also requested, if you're, if you are making an appropriation request, you know, a specific line item for a specific project, that you need to outline that as part of what you present to the delegation. And so, we are working on that, and that would, and it's a little bit, it is looking, because a request is for the fiscal year of, that would be coming up, so it's, it's a little bit difficult in this project, because it overlaps two summers, because...
Sixteen seconds.
Right, right. So that is, so the request, we'll be focusing on that, which would be for three of our expanded elementary schools, first their, the second half of their kindergarten year program, and then the first part of the K-1.
Right.
And, but for the AltaVista, it would be a program, it would be just the K through three in both segments. But we have crafted a proposed request that will be part of that, and that should be completed by the end of this week, that I would be happy to distribute that, so all board members are aware of what we are requesting.
And I, and I think what's kind of turning up our conversation is that, because to navigate sunshine, which is challenging sometimes, but, and having the opportunity to talk about, because it's such a long road, as you know, as all of us know, and that you don't want to get too ahead of ourselves when we're talking to anyone in this community, because we don't know what's going, what the outcome's going to be, but also making sure as board, we all support it and are having those conversations, you know, in an effort to get it passed and get the funding. So I'm very excited about it.
Well, it's, you know, it's a continuous funding, it's not just...
Well, that's certainly...
But I will say this, we're not saying the president, because the CED Academy down in South Florida, which is a big charter school, they get over $2 million a year.
Well, and that's fair.
And there are some others like that around the state, so, you know, it's not inconceivable, and I think that the ramifications for the whole state are, are something great, but we also have, you know, issues with local people here who have funded us before, and are kind of looking at our model, so I think, once we get the final thing together and get it wrapped up, then we all kind of have to have some similar talking points.
That's exactly where my goal was, and so...
Similar talking points.
The, and then from a modeling standpoint, like I said, that, you're right, we don't know, it's not that guaranteed, but we can always...
Anything anybody can do is helpful, though, and it's much appreciated, because we need to do this.
And our, our revenue from the one mil increases, has been increasing.
But you have to remember that you, the bulk of those dollars are for positions, so as you add positions, the additional 30 minutes, you add to staff, just because we have to hire more staff as we grow, so that means you're adding more 30 minutes. So that area increases. Your amounts that you pay to charter schools, as their enrollment grows, increases. And any staff, because you have, in, you have, remember, as part of your budget, 1.25% increase that we put as part of the budget, and health insurance that's expected to raise, and retirement, I mean, so if you hire arts teachers with those monies, they are more expensive for next, this coming year than they are now. I mean, I mean, so each, there, the increase of the per staff is then impacting that one mil that you have attributed those positions to the one mil funding.
And our tax support has gone up drastically this year, I think over last year, it was what?
So it's, I know it feels like...
It's in the one mil.
This should be new money, but it is not all new money, because...
Well, it's like seven, what's it, like $7 million additional money this year.
Well, Al can, Al can break down exactly how that money is distributed. You are still using fund reserve with a pretty status quo budget, except for the 1.25%, you are still having to dip into fund reserve. Now, that's less than what we had thought it was going to be, so I'm not saying you're in a bad situation, but there's not, to implement a program that has significant expenditures over time, will take some adjustments of some priorities. It'll take adjustments within the schools and how they allocate Title I dollars, because they have to, they will have to commit more of their Title I dollars instead of the regular school year to the summertime, which they've already started doing with this coming summer, those schools that are involved in this. But, so those are the kinds of conversations, I don't, there's not a plan set, oh, this is what we're going to do. I don't have a pot of money that's saying this has not been assigned yet, so that you could choose to make that priority.
What are some examples of those schools who are choosing, or, you know, obviously they have to figure out if it's something from a funding standpoint to a degree, you know, depending on where we come from, and what, what other support we're able to provide, those schools can opt to participate or not? Is that correct? Or, I mean, we are asking them to roll it out, or you guys are asking those three, but even in the future, if we're to expand beyond those three schools, or total of four schools, is that something the schools initially would have the choice to?
There'd have to be a commitment from them, in terms of how much of their Title I dollars, because your regular elementary schools don't have enough leeway.
Right.
To meet class size, to have guidance counselors, to have the staff that you need to run an elementary school, there's not enough additional money to dedicate for a summer program that it would cost this amount. So it leaves it to your Title I, which is where the most need is as well, in terms of the level of poverty, but it would require those schools to dedicate a proportion of their Title I dollars to this. They have to be committed to saying, "I won't fund a teacher during the regular school year, because I will fund the two teachers I can then afford at the, during the summer." Now, it would also have a general operating, because Title I is not sufficient to, to do this alone. So it's multiple areas that we, and as that expands, then it puts more pressure in terms of dedicating funds outside of your regular staffing allocation, and, and basically modifying to get that amount of money requires you to modify your staffing formulas of what it, that you have to make, and you, those of you who've made cuts, know, that is not an easy process, particularly after years of making cuts, of making, saying, "We'll, we'll get less here in this staffing formula to free up some money that we can dedicate over," because it's a continuous cycle. So I don't, I just know that there's challenges, and we're taking this step at a time to the best we can, looking at, how can we structure a program that is still having some of the impact, but is there a way that we can share costs, or do it in a way that's a little bit less expensive? So we have to look at that possibility. Then we also have to look at other areas of revenue, such as what we're doing with this, to, to enhance the revenue from the Title I and general operating, to see what is doable over time, and sustainable. The sustainability is an issue for a program that is not without significant costs, even with the positive impacts. You don't, and you don't want to make a change that impacts your 180-day program negatively, so that you might get, gain here and lose because you're not able to do some things that are critical during the 180 days. So, and I don't take anything that I'm saying as being negative to what we're trying to achieve. I'm very positive about that, but I also know the challenges of making that kind of program, especially in expanding it, doable without significant new revenues, which hopefully will eventually come from the state.
But what I'm hearing from you, Lori, is that the schools have the, it's, it's up to them to decide whether they want to do this or not, and I'm saying, what happens if it becomes a board priority, that this is what you will do, and you will find a way to do it, because we know that this works?
And then crossing on the front end could potentially save us money from the issues there on, I mean, if that's from a data standpoint, that's what shows us.
Certainly, if you, if you have, if you're supporting it with the funding coming from someplace else, then the schools would be more than happy, I think, to provide that kind of program. That's, it is the funding that is the challenge, not in finding ways. So I think that, but that's, that price tag then increases for you to find those additional revenues, and where do we take that?
And I heard you say is, I'm sorry, but what I heard you say is that it's up to the principals to figure out where they're going to take the funding from, the title of...
There, the only option is title funding. There is no, you don't have enough leeway in your general, in those schools that don't get Title I. So we, I believe that is an appropriate use of Title I funding, and so frankly, to make this more doable, we have to include that, and have already included that, and they have been willing to put some Title I dollars, take it from the 180 days. These three schools that just started, that have done this for the summer are doing...